Great.
Just like thirty more seconds, we'll turn on the mics, you're live right now, so as soon as we turn the mics hot, everything is all set.
Okay.
Yeah, I would like to say that. All right. Should be good.
All right, great, thank you and welcome to the Danvers Planning Board Meeting of October 24th, 2023. First item on the agenda is 49 Adams Street, request by Jared Hazel for extension of site plan approval expiration from November 3rd, 2023 to November 3rd, 2024. Assessors map 57 lot 27.
Thank you very much, my name is Nancy McCann, I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Jared Hazel. Jared is here this evening, he's out in the lobby with his young son, so if I need to bring him in, I can do that.
Yeah, you're good.
Am I good?
Sorry, thank you.
Okay. The board may recall back a couple of years ago, we appeared before you and received a special permit as well as site plan approval to construct a duplex on the property at 49 Adams Street. There's currently a duplex there and we needed a special permit to add a second duplex. That special permit is still active, however, the site plan approval has expired. The applicant did obtain a building permit within the required period of time last fall and then ran into a little bit of a snag with financing the project, so unfortunately, he didn't get started quick enough, so his building permit expired and as a result, now this site plan approval is going to expire the beginning of the month, actually next week. So we're requesting a one-year extension on the site plan approval. That will coincide with the validity date of the special permit, so that does make sense and he is prepared to go forward at this time. So we're requesting a one-year extension on the site plan approval, please.
Okay, questions from the board, Tori?
No questions.
Lou?
I think you answered my question, so in terms of that the the extension would coincide with the expiration of the special permit.
That's right.
Okay. Yep, no further questions.
All right, Jean?
No questions.
Mike?
No questions.
Tim?
No questions.
All right, that seems pretty straightforward, so I'm fine with this. This is more of an administrative or a public?
It is administrative. It is administrative, yes.
So no public input? All right, hearing that, if I could have a motion, Lou?
Yes, a motion here regarding 49 Adams Street, extension of site plan approval expiration date. This is to certify that at a meeting of the Danvers Planning Board held on October 24th, 2023, by a motion duly made and seconded, it was voted, we, the Danvers Planning Board, approved the request by Jared Hazel for the extension of the site plan approval expiration date for 49 Adams Street, assessors map 57 lot 27, from November 3rd, 2023, original expiration date to November 3rd, 2024, signed on October 24th, 2023, James Sears Chair.
The motion's been made, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's been seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None?
Thank you very much.
The next item on the agenda, 11 and 20 Locust Street, request by RC Realty Construction and Development LLC for the release of the performance guarantee, $62,954.30 for completed site improvements, assessors map 43 lots 147, 162.
Thank you very much, my name is Nancy McCann, I'm here on behalf of Thomas Carnavale, trustee, the applicant and developer of this property. With me tonight is TJ Carnavale and we are requesting a release of the performance guarantee in the amount of $62,954.30 as all work on this project has been completed, I'm pleased to report. I did speak with Jared Morris, the senior planter today and he has confirmed that all work has been completed.
Okay, questions from the board, I'll start to my left, Tim?
No questions.
Michael?
No questions.
Jean?
No questions.
Lou?
So the amount I see here is really, it's 62,954.30, was that the?
That's correct.
Okay. And so, and staffs confirm that that is, that number is good?
That is correct.
I have no further, no questions.
All right, question, Tori?
Question, first half, do we have some memo or something from the town indicating that someone's inspected this?
Pl- pl- planning, uh, planning staff, myself and Brian Cassidy in my office have visited the site several times over the past year and a half, so.
Thank you, no more questions.
All right, no questions from me, I would entertain a motion on this?
Yes, I have a motion here regarding 11 and 20 Locust Street, release of, release of performance guarantee. This is certified that at a meeting of the Danvers Planning Board held on October 24th, 2023, by a motion duly made and seconded, it was voted, we, the Danvers Planning Board, approved the request by RC Realty Construction and Development LLC for the release of the performance guarantee in the amount of $62,954.30 for the completed site improvements at 11 and 20 Locust Street, assessors map 43 lots 147, 162, signed on October 24th, 2023, James Sears Chair.
The motion's been made, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Tori, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? None.
Thank you very much.
Next item on the agenda, 181 Newbury Street. Request for site plan review pursuant to section four of the zoning bylaw submitted by Danvers ICL II LLC for property in the Highway Corridor Zone Zoning District. The applicant proposes an expansion of the existing auto dealership building and associated site modifications, assessors map 32 lot 36.
Thank you very much, again, my name is Nancy McCann, I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Danvers ICL II LLC, owner of the property located at 181 Newbury Street. With me tonight is Marshall Jesperson, manager of 181 Newbury Street LLC. Also with me tonight is Katie Cruz, the project engineer, and Paul Beal, the project architect, as well as Sam Amato from CM&amp;B, consultant for the project. This property located at 181 Newbury Street is located in the Danvers Highway Corridor Zone Zoning District. It consists of approximately 2.35 acres and has been an automotive dealership since the 1950s. You may remember it a while back as the Honda North dealership and then that Honda North moved further up Newbury Street and has been operating there. But this property has been an automotive dealership consistently since the 1950s and the applicant proposes to renovate the dated building that's located on this site and modernize that facility for purposes of providing a new Kia dealership on this site. So this will be a brand-new Kia automotive dealership, continuing the automotive sales, new car sales that has been on the site for a long time. The proposal is to remove a portion of the existing dealership building but keep some of the dealership building, and we'll go into details on that, and replace that existing section with a new addition with various site upgrades to stormwater management as well as landscaping. The building itself with the new additions on it will be fully conforming to the dimensional requirements of the Highway Corridor Zoning District. This project does not require any zoning relief from the Board of Appeals and requires only site plan approval from this board as well as an order of conditions from the Conservation Commission, and that has been requested. So the project is a fully conforming site. The new building will provide a new drive-through drop-off area for service, we're going to be increasing service bay areas, we are decreasing the impervious coverage on the site by providing some additional landscaping, we're also improving the internal layout of the dealership itself which will provide a better customer and employee experience on the property. We're enhancing the showroom, we have office mezzanine on the second floor as well as a part storage area, so it's an overall improvement and modernization of this site. So what you see now will be replaced with a dealership building that is more in keeping with a 21st century dealership rather than what you see now, again with additional improvements to the overall site for stormwater management and landscaping. The dealership will operate seven days a week, Monday through, Monday through Sunday, 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, and this is again a new Kia dealership. It's a small dealership, so as part of this application, we have requested an alternative parking plan for purposes of providing required parking for this site. I've discussed this with this board a number of times with auto dealerships and the board has come to realize that the current zoning bylaw does not accurately reflect how people buy cars anymore. Used to be, you visited dealerships, you took the family out on a Saturday afternoon, you walked around the dealerships, you visited four or five times before you purchased a car and then made a decision. Now, of course, most shopping for vehicles is done online, so typically a customer comes maybe once, maybe twice, to buy a vehicle, very often it's done in one, one transaction. So the customer parking requirement under the zoning bylaw certainly exceeds what is reasonably required for dealerships and this board has granted an alternative parking plan on a number of occasions because of that. So we have provided a, an alternative parking plan in the application to provide the required parking for the customers as well as the employees and service. At this point, I think what I will do is turn this over to Katie Cruz, the project engineer, she can walk you through this plan and point out the different parking areas as well as all of the other site features that we are proposing. Following that, the project architect can describe the building for you. So Katie?
Thank you. Good evening, my name is Katie Cruz, I'm a civil engineer with Hancock Associates. A little bit about the existing site, most of the site area is currently paved or, yeah, if you can go to the next sheet actually, or covered by existing building. You can see in gray, the rear portion of the building will be removed, that's the current service area of the building, and on the next sheet I'll show you the proposed conditions. The site is located between Route 1 and Route 95, the right side of this plan is Plan North and the front of the building also faces Plan North. There is a system of wetlands to the south and the U-Haul facility south of that and a commercial property is to the north. The system of wetlands is associated with Beaver Brook and it wraps around the south side and east side of the project site and it's connected to a wet pond that's on the site. The majority of the pavement will be removed and repaved with some minor grading for drainage. About 1,000 square feet of existing pavement will be removed and replaced with landscaped areas, that's mostly landscaped areas around the building and kind of squaring off some of the parking areas. There'll be new Cape Cod berm as well, which will help serve for stormwater management, direct water towards surface drains on site. The site will continue to be accessed via the existing curb cut off of Route 1, Newbury Street. The area just in front of the curb cut facing Plan Down will be used for inventory space and car carrier turning movements. The driveway will then head Plan Left, there will be employee and customer parking on either side of that and then the rear tandem spaces will be used for inventory storage as well. And then cars can turn, again, Plan Down, there'll be customer spaces in front of the building. Some of these spaces, seven of them, are compact spaces, so they'll be nine by sixteen and then there'll be a 22-foot driveway next to them. The reason for that is that we're holding the existing face of the building and then adding an accessible sidewalk and we didn't want to push the pavement too far towards the pond which is the wetland. And then on the south, east, south and west sides of the site, there will be a one-way drive aisle that goes around the building clockwise, cars at the page bottom can either enter the service drop-off or drive around it. The service entrance is on the southern side of the building and the service exit is on the western side of the building. Accessible sidewalks will be installed along the front of the building and I should mention, the service dr- drop-off is pointing out Page Down, there'll be an addition facing Route 1, Newbury Street, and actually the face of the building that faces to the south is actually pulled back a little bit from the existing condition. Sure. Yep. All right. And then lastly, we're showing a snow storage area over a portion of the paved, of the paved inventory area. The site grades itself are fairly flat and slope kind of gradually down to the system of wetlands along the bottom and on the side there. Route 1 is significantly higher than the project site, so the driveway will continue to slope down into the project site. The project will include an improved stormwater management system, it mostly just drains untreated to the wetlands in the current condition, we'll be adding water quality treatment units which will treat most of the runoff from the vehicular paved area. And there'll be a riprap pad with a level spreader which will drain clean runoff from the roof area. Utility services will be new for the proposed building but they will connect to the existing services on site for water and sewer. We've submitted a stormwater permit application with the Engineering Division and we've received two rounds of comments from them on that, including a letter with comments that was sent to the board and we've been in communication with them and feel that we can respond to all of them adequately. We've also had one meeting with the Conservation Commission and a sit walk with them as well. For landscaping, I'm going to read this a little bit, new landscaped areas are proposed around the parking area, around the pond, a few places around the building and up here by the hydrant. The areas closest to the wetlands on this side and this side will be planted with conservation wildlife seed mix. Red bearberry shrubs will be planted around the building, this will be a native grass seed mix up here, and then surrounding the wetland will be a new red maple tree, a combination of shrubs that are all native plantings, and then four new trees are proposed along this edge and those are eastern red cedars. There'll be about 2,000 square feet of new landscaped area. And then I think I'll turn it over to Paul to talk about the building.
Thank you. My name is Paul Beal, I'm from Region Associates, we're the architect for the project. Do you mind jumping to the, to the next slide? I believe it's the floor plan? I think it may be a couple, actually.
You looking for the elevation?
I was actually looking for the floor plan?
Floor plan.
The main level floor plan.
The first floor, second floor?
First floor, please. Okay. So. So as Katie said and Nancy as well, that a portion of this building is existing which would basically be this part here and this will be an addition here and the service department will be all new. The showroom which, well, the main, the main customer access for sales would be through this front door here, handicap parking on the side, showroom for four cars, office space, sales space, and for service customers, they would drive around to this side for the service reception here where the techs will take the car around the building and in to nine service bays. We also have wash-in-detail facilities and upgraded tech facilities. The upper level is, oops, is again also existing, it's reserved for employee, office space, break rooms, part storage and general office space. If you want to go to the elevation, please? So this is the, the front elevation facing north, this follows the Kia corporate standards which is a metal panel system, most of which is a silver color with a black trim on the top of the building at the front as well as at the service drive, all glass around the showroom. This is the side facing Newbury Street, again, silver panels on the front and a gray panel system in the back and then the rear views are similar materials, it's silver metal panels and with black trim.
So the top is facing 95 or Newbury Street?
The top is facing north, so it's, it's facing to the right on the plan drawings. This is the main entrance here, Route 1 would be on this side and 95 would be on this side.
Okay, gotcha. Will there be signage on the side of either highway?
There's an existing sign on the entrance to the site on Route 1 and that will be rehabbed or refurbished to the Kia standards.
Okay.
Believe the sign is in this area right here. Actually, it's right here.
Will you get a plan on that? To staff? Is it illuminated or not?
It will be, I believe it already is.
So that plan will go to staff?
That's right.
You already have it in them?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
I, I believe. It's hard, it's hard to see on this, on this drawing, I believe that's noted as the sign. You mean what the sign itself looks like?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that has to be approved as well, but we can make a condition on that?
Okay. I believe that's still being worked on between the owners and Kia signage company.
Question, Josh?
Oh, when you brought up the condition, what was, what were you kind of thinking on that?
No, I'm just saying, we don't have a, we don't have a depiction of it, so I think we would just.
Sure.
Condition it to your staff approval.
I believe, Mr. Chairman, we're just refacing the sign, so we typically don't provide the graphics because we can put anything we want, quite honestly, on our panel.
Yeah.
And we're just reusing the existing sign.
Okay. Does it say that in the narrative somewhere?
I don't think so.
Okay. Yeah, it's just good to have that approved that way, just so we know.
We're happy to take a condition that will submit what the graphic is going to look like, I don't think there's an approval process for the graphic, but we're happy to submit it.
Thank you.
I think that's it, Mr. Chairman, we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Maybe just a quick review of the lighting plan just for the audience and the people at home before we close out?
So this was the, the proposed site lighting that we've been working on with a lighting consultant based on the Kia requirements and we're essentially following the, the locations of the existing poles. We'll be adding a couple of new poles on the corners that face toward the building here and here and I believe a couple of these were new as well, but all of these around the perimeter are. Sorry, I, I believe all of these around the perimeter are at the locations of existing poles and they would all be 25-foot either single or double head, all pointed toward the parking areas.
And they're all LEDMs?
They are all LED, yeah.
Replacing whatever is existing or some.
Correct.
Thank you.
Jim, there's a, there's a picture of it in that corner right there.
Yeah, I saw that.
I'm sorry.
Yep. All right, this time, questions from the board, Tori?
Start with the lighting, because I don't see a reference anywhere, is this dark sky compliant?
I actually am not sure off the top of my head on that.
It's very hard to hear with the noise behind us.
I apologize.
You guys speak up, all of you guys.
I'm, I'm not certain. I'm not, I don't believe so, but I'm not certain.
Point of clarification on the parking, was it 52 spaces? That is distinct from inventory storage, I'm fairly sure it is, but I just want to be clear about that.
Yes. So the parking that we're proposing are 57 parking spaces.
Fifty-seven, thank you.
The rest of the spaces that are shown on the site are actually inventory storage and how's the parking breaks down is 25 employee spaces, those are the number of employees on the larger shift, 20 service spaces and 12 customer spaces for a total of 57 parking spaces which we think will be more than adequate for the needs of this small dealership.
Okay. Thank you, I don't have any other questions.
All right, Lou?
Yeah, just a question, I knew you'd mentioned a few moments ago about the, about the spaces, so I think I saw as, you mentioned that there were 20 service spaces, are those spaces for vehicles actively being repaired or that's for someone who might be visiting the service department? I'm just a little confused, just.
Oh, that's for someone who drives into the drop, the service drop-off area, does the paperwork.
Yep.
And then the car gets brought out and parked until there's a bay open, then it goes in. and then the car gets brought out and parked until there's a bay open, then it goes in, and then when it comes out before the customer picks it up, it goes back out to a parking space. So it's those vehicles that are there for active service.
Okay. And I think I noticed as well on the floor plan, I think the first, as you see in a lot of car dealerships nowadays, there's, you know, right near the drop-off for service, there seems to be a little, like, a couple of tables, a little cafe of sorts.
Yep.
Is that what's anticipated for this site as well?
Yes. Yeah, a little waiting area if you're getting something done that's quick.
And I guess a question I had, though, too, is in terms of, and I guess looking at the original application, it said, just in terms of, you know, understanding, yeah, I mean, in terms of car buying has definitely changed through the years in terms of that, you know, it's much more of a going in, one or two stops. But I think you indicated that the, and I just want to make sure I have this correct, that it would be daily 10 visits?
Yeah, we're anticipating probably 10 or 12 customers throughout the course of the day.
Is that 10 or 12 to purchase a vehicle, or 10 or 12, is that inclusive of a service drop-off as well? Because that seems awful low.
That would be exclusive of the service. The service is taken care of with the service parking spaces. These would be for folks who are coming to actually purchase the vehicle.
Got it, okay. And in terms of just sort of the flow of the, you know, of the driveway and parking and use of service, I mean, is it anticipated in terms, I mean, how extensive would the service activities be? Is there's going to be a queue of cars at seven in the morning, or, I'm just not sure how, is this going to be a large service department or servicing a number of vehicles?
This is a small service, it's a small dealership generally, and it's a small service department. How many bays did you say? Nine bays, which is quite small now in terms of service areas for most dealerships. So it's very small. So folks typically make appointments to come in for service, and so we don't anticipate that sort of a lineup that you see at a larger dealership.
Okay, got it. All right. And just a question as well, in terms of, I know that engineering, in their letter, I think it was dated October 19th, had a number of comments in terms of, I think there were like, it looked like there were nine total, and you're willing to take as a condition to satisfy any outstanding engineering concerns?
Yes, yes. We viewed all of those, and as Katie said, she has spoken with the engineering department and gone back and forth with them. There are no items here that are anything other than technical in nature, and we can certainly comply with all of those, and we would accept a condition that we would satisfy the engineering department's memo of October 19th, I think is the most recent.
Okay. Okay. I have no further questions.
Thanks, Lou. Gene, questions?
So you said you now have a total of nine service bays, and you're going up by two to 11?
No, the new has nine.
Okay. How many do you have now?
I believe seven or eight.
Okay. So you're not going up by that much. Okay, that was my only question. Thanks.
All right, Tim, questions?
Is there a reason why the traffic flows to the left? It kind of seems backwards to every other drive-on-the-right standard. Yeah.
Yeah, the reason for that is to make the entrance into the service drive-through kind of the first point that customers would get into, and then, so they wouldn't have to drive all the way around the building to get to that spot.
You have to speak a little louder, I'm sorry.
Oops, apologies. Yep, the reason for that is so that the service drive-through is the first stop going around the building.
Is there any concern? Because if you're coming off the highway, then you're going to be sort of crossing paths with people who might be coming out.
So we have two-way traffic through here and then through here, and then the one-way traffic would start beyond these spaces and go around the building that way, and then kind of head out in line with this direction.
Okay. And a related question, it seems like from the shading, the only customer spots are the ones out front, and you mentioned that the majority of those are compact, but I only, I think I only see two or three that are non-compact for customers. Is that right?
Yeah, we have one, two, three, five of them.
Not including the handicap spots?
Yeah. That's correct. Given the amount of inventory space on this site, if we, if there was a need for more customer spaces, some of the inventory spaces up here could be swapped out or shifted around with the employee spaces.
Would the spots be marked, like, customer parking versus employee parking, or is this just for planning purposes?
Yeah, I think they would be, yeah.
All right. No other questions? Thanks.
Thank you. Mike?
I don't know if I'd say it's a question, but just a quick comment. I think you mentioned there was 22-foot drive-aisles. Is that correct?
Only in one location, through here. The reason for that is holding the space of the existing building, putting an accessible sidewalk, and then trying to not move the pavement any closer to the wetlands. You can see it's very close right here.
And that's two-way traffic there?
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's just tight with compact cars pulling out of there in a 22-foot traffic, but, I mean, it's not undue obligation to comment that it's a pretty tight drive aisle for two-way traffic.
Yeah.
Thanks.
All right, just for, there's some newer members on the board. If you could just quickly go over that alternative parking plan as to what's required versus what you're actually proposing. I know on the plan, it shows it on sheet four, but if you could just explain it for the audience and the board, I'd appreciate it.
I will do that. The bylaw has a very high parking requirement for automotive dealerships. I think it was drafted in the 80s as far as that requirement is concerned. And for a, based on square footage, is how that calculation is done in the bylaw, this site would need 98 parking spaces. We, that's higher than certainly would be needed for this site. So we have 25 parking spaces for employees, because that is the number of employees on our largest shift. We have 20 service bays spaces, and again, this is based on the operator, Mr. Jesperson has been in this business for a very long time, has been involved in operating Honda North for a long time, which is a dealership within this area, so he's got some good background information, as does his management team that came up with what they thought their needs would be. So we have 20 service spaces, and then we have 12 customer parking spaces. We're anticipating 12 customers, 10 to 12 customers throughout the course of the day, but we are actually providing 12 parking spaces. So all 12 of those could come at the same time, which we certainly don't anticipate, and we would still have required the necessary parking spaces for them. So the required parking is 98 parking spaces. We are requesting approval of the alternative parking plan of 57 parking spaces, and that's providing for all of our employees, for the service vehicles that will be coming in for service, as well as for the retail sales customers.
Okay. Couple of the quick questions. Deliveries of the automobiles, what time of day do we have a schedule on that? Because sometimes there's complaints with respect to trucks idling, trucks being, arriving in the middle of the night. Do we have a schedule on that, or a time that they would be delivered?
I'm going to ask Marshall that. The one benefit to this particular site is, unlike some of the other dealerships that we have along Route 114 that have residential neighbors, we don't have any residential neighbors who would be impacted by a truck arriving in the night, but that's not what we're anticipating. Marshall, do you have an idea of when trucks, the car carriers would arrive? And this plan shows how they would be able to come into the site, unload on the site, and then leave as well.
Marshall Jesperson, I'm the dealer principal. We have had, we've had car carriers that deliver usually during the day. Every once in a while, we do get one that delivers at night. We've also had at this site a little bit of a problem where some carriers came and parked on route one. The reason was that the entrance had a little hump on it, and the carrier, a couple of them were very low, and they got hung up on that hump, and so delivered outside. We're curing that in this particular repaving, and so everybody will be able to get off the road and deliver the cars, unload the cars, load cars up for when they go to auction.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
As far as outdoor audio, would you accept the condition as to no outdoor audio?
Absolutely will accept that condition.
Thank you. And then the only, last question I have before we turn it over to the public. The snow storage area seems to have bought the beaver brook, so there's just a concern about contaminants or salt or what have you making its way. How are we going to prevent that issue?
Yeah, this was an item that we discussed with the Conservation Commission as well. They told us that their preference is that we store the snow on impervious surfaces and not kind of push it towards the wetland, even maybe have some signage around the edge of pavement to indicate that snow cannot be stored within the landscaped areas. I think another aspect of this project is that it's really a redevelopment. It's kind of fixing some conditions on-site, but it's mostly repaving, and that was kind of...
We have a plan to move the cars or move the snow or both? You're going to have to approach the mic. Thank you.
Thank you. It's an excellent question. What we have in plan in all of the dealerships is when it's about to snow, if we get a warning, is we do move all of the inventory so that we have places to put the snow. And it's sort of an all-hands-on-deck. We move all of the inventory into a very compact space. It gets to the point where we back them up so that you can't open the doors. We leave the keys in, because nobody can get to the cars. And then we can, we can deal with the snow, move cars back when, after we've done the snow deal. It's different for every dealership, every lot, and sometimes even every storm, but we do have a plan, and that plan is to move the cars first, do all of our snow removal, and we're constantly moving, moving cars and moving snow.
And at what point do you, would you truck the snow off?
When we get enough snow, we truck it off. We've hauled snow before, and it's, you know, nothing we like to do, because it's pretty expensive, but when it gets to the point where we don't have room for the cars, then we either have to take the cars away or take the snow away, and we determine which one is going to be the cheaper option.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Any further questions from the board? This is a public meeting. I would entertain any questions from the public. If you are going to ask a question, I'd have you approach the mic and identify yourself. Mr. Bradstreet?
Bill Bradstreet, Town Meeting Member, Precinct One. Thank you about the outside audio, by the way. The cafe-type situation for coffee, snacks, or whatever in between for employees or customers, does that require any kind of a permit or anything, or is that considered cursory so that it falls under an umbrella?
Well, let's get some more detail asking through me to the owner or attorney.
I'm asking through you.
Thank you.
There is no food preparation that's going on, so we don't need a license for food preparation. This is a coffee, and, you know, they might have some packaged things available, snacks sort of things, but, so is there a separate permit process? No, there isn't a separate permit process. This is just an added convenience for folks who might be waiting for a car.
Okay. Thank you. Further questions from the audience? Seeing none. Further questions from the board? I would entertain a motion at this point to close the public hearing.
I move we close the public hearing.
All in favor? Opposed, none. Also, I'd entertain a motion on this.
Jim, if I could just, just for clarify, other than the no outdoor audio, were there any other conditions that we were...
Yes.
Trying to figure...
Lou?
Yes. By my notes, in addition to the, in addition to the two conditions that are already written on the decision, which includes the comments from Danvers Engineering, we have a, the applicant agreed to submit the graphic for the exterior signage, fronting Newbury Street, for approval by town staff.
And it would just be sent to staff?
What's that?
It would just be, the sign would just be sent to staff?
Staff, okay.
Or I guess that was a question.
Yep, so it's the applicant, what I have here is the applicant agrees to submit the graphic for the exterior signage facing Newbury Street for approval by staff, and then the other, additional condition is no outdoor audio.
My only comment on that, if I could, is there really isn't an approval from staff required. We can submit it, they will review it. We need a building permit. I don't believe building permits are issued until they're reviewed by town staff. Anyway, I just want to make sure that we know that there is not an approval process from staff for purposes of looking at sign graphics.
Yeah, it's an administrative review, I believe.
Review is fine.
By town staff?
Yeah.
Okay. Got it. So I'll add those in. I'll read that as well.
Yeah.
All right, so I'll make this motion, Site Plan Review, 181 Newbury Street. Date of application, September 13th, 2023. Date of hearing, October 24th, 2023. Date of decision, October 24th, 2023. The Danvers Planning Board finds the site plan submitted by Danvers ICL II LLC for property at 181 Newbury Street, Assessors Map 32, Lot 36, to be in substantial compliance with the criteria and regulations adopted by the town. Details of the plan review can be found on the following plans. Permit Site Plans, 181 Newbury Street, Danvers, Massachusetts, 01923, prepared by Hancock Associates, dated September 13th, 2023, revised to October 24th, 2023, consisting of 12 sheets. The following submission requirements have been waived. One, Section 4.3.1, Title Sheet. D, Existing Contours at 1-Foot Intervals Are Shown on the Existing Conditions Plan. Two, Section 4.3.2, Site Analysis Plan. Information required on Site Analysis Plan is shown on the Existing Condition Plan, Existing Conditions Plan. A, Existing Contours at 1-Foot Intervals Are Shown on the Existing Conditions Plan. B, Steep Slopes. C, Trees Over 6 Inches DBH. And D, Note Containing the Number and Total DBH of All Trees With DBH Greater Than 6 Inches Are Not Shown in the Plan. E, Location and Results of the Soil Tests Are Shown on the Grading and Drainage Plan. C4. Three, Section 4.3.3, Dimensional Regulations Plan. Information required on the Dimensional Regulations Plan is shown on the Existing Conditions Plan and the Layout Materials Plan, C3. The Layout and Materials Plan, C3, is stamped by a professional engineer, P.E., rather than a registered land surveyor. A, The Lot Lines and Bearings Are Shown on the Existing Conditions Plan. B, The Location and Bearings of the Easement Lines Are Not Shown in the Plan. E, The Yard Setback for the Proposed Dealership Building Is Shown on the Layout and Materials Plan, C3. I, A zoning dimensional table showing existing and proposed lot area, frontage, yard setbacks, building height, and impervious surface is shown on the Layout and Materials Plan, C3. C3. Four, Section 4.3.4, Site Construction Plan. The Site Construction Plan is entitled the Layout and Materials Plan, C3. B, The Existing Contours Are Shown at One-Foot Intervals Are Shown on the Existing Condition Plan and the Proposed Contours Are Shown on the Grading, Drainage, and Utilities Plan, C4. F, The Proposed Drainage System in General Is Shown on the Grading, Drainage, and Utilities Plan, C4. H, A Proposed Limit of Work, LOW Line, Is Not Shown on the Plan. I, A Table Indicating Amounts of Earth Material That Are to Be Removed, Added, or Reused on Site in Cubic Feet Is Not Shown on the Plan. Five, Section 4.3.6, Utilities Plan. The Utilities Plan is entitled Grading Drainage Utilities Plan, C4. B, The Profile of the New Water Sewer or Stormwater Pipes Is Not Shown on the Grading Drainage Utilities Plan, C4. Six, Section 4.3.7, Landscape Plan. No Landscape Plan Is Submitted. A, The Existing Contours Are Shown at One-Foot Intervals Are Shown, should be as shown, on the Existing Condition Plan and the Proposed Contours Are Shown on the Grading, Drainage, and Utilities Plan, C4. B, Landscape Design Is Shown on the Layout and Materials Plan, C3. D, Existing and Proposed Building Footprints, Parking Spaces, Driveways, and Walks Are Shown on the Layout and Materials Plan, C3. E, Plan Counts, Plant Counts Are Included in Labels Rather Than the Schedule Format on the Layout and Materials Plan, C3. G, Tree Protection Method Is Shown on the Site Preparation and Erosion Control Plan, C2. H, Wetland Delineation Is Shown on Layout and Materials Plan, C3, and the Grading Drainage Utilities Plan, C4. I, The Yard Setback From Lot Lines Is Shown on A Table Showing the Percentage of Existing and Proposed Impervious Surface Is Shown on the Layout and Materials Plan, C3. Seven, Section 4.3.8, Off-Street Parking and Loading Plan. Information Required on the Off-Street and Loading Plan Is Shown on the Layout and Materials Plan, C3. B, The Construction Details and Type of Materials for Surface Paving Is Shown on the Site Details, C5. Eight, Section 4.4, Table of Development Data. No Table of Development Data Submitted. Total Land Area, Building Coverage, Impervious Surface, Gross Floor Area of All Buildings, and Number of Off-Street Parking Spaces Is Shown on the Layout and Materials Plan, C3. The Following Requirements from Zoning Bylaw Have Been Waived. One, Section 10.2, Specific Provisions. Alternative Parking Plan. The Required Number of Parking Spaces is 98. The Project Is Providing 57 Parking Spaces, Not Including Inventory Spaces for Vehicles for Sale. Two, Section 10.3G, Width of Access Drives and Parking Isles. All Access Drives and Parking Lot Isles for Two-Way Traffic Shall Have a Minimum Width of 24 Feet. The Project Proposes an Access Drive for Two-Way Traffic with a Width of 22 Feet. Administrative. The Project Is Subject to the Following Conditions. One, The Applicant Agrees to Satisfy All the Comments in the Danvers Engineering Division Memorandum, dated October 19th, 2023. Two, If There Are Any Changes to the Approved Plans, the Use or the Conditions on Premises, Planning Staff Will Review. If Deemed a Major Change by Staff, the Applicant Will Have to Apply for a New Application for Site Plan Review. Three, The Applicant Agrees to Submit the Graphic for the Exterior Signage Facing Newbury Street for Administrative Review by Staff. Four, The Applicant Agrees That There Shall Be No Outdoor Audio. This Project Is Subject to the Attached List of General Conditions. Any Approval of this Site Plan Review Shall Lapse Within Three Years From the Grant Thereof if Construction Has Not Begun by Such Date. James Sears, Chair.
Motion's been made, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Tori, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None.
Thank you very much.
152 Endicott Street, Request for a Roadway Improvement Plan and Site Plan Review pursuant to Section 4 of the Zoning Bylaw submitted by JBM Danvers LLC. For property in the Commercial 3 zoning district, the applicant proposes to improve an existing way chalet court to access a new retail commercial building with a new, and a new hotel, Assessors Map 63, Lot 14.
Good evening, Chairperson Sears, members of the Planning Board. For the record, Frank Marinelli, and I am Land Use Counsel for Torrington Properties for this project. With me this evening is Pete Doucet, he's the Director of Development for Torrington. Also, Bob Clark, our project engineer from Allen &amp; Major. Greg Micalitis, who is our engineering consultant, as well as Jeff Dirk, who is our traffic engineer. So we're happy to be back with the board again. The last time we were here was July 25th, so I think that since then, we've had peer reviews and responses to the peer reviews. We've dealt extensively with Josh in the Planning Department. We've also dealt extensively with our neighbor at 180 Endicott, represented by Attorney McCann who's here. So just to briefly go through the project again, certainly it's hard to imagine a property that cries out more for redevelopment than this property at 152 Endicott Street. It's currently an eyesore in the town and it is located, it's 4.3 acres located in the C3 zone. The C3 zone has, as a, as a use by right, the development program that we're proposing, which is an approximate 10,900 square foot retail pad, single story. The current tenant targeted for that retail pad is Fidelity. And secondly, the other component of the redevelopment program is an approximate 15,250 square foot footprint for a four-story hotel, so that's approximately 61,000 square feet. And again, both of these are uses by right. In the Site Plan Review context, as the board knows, the applicable standards are regulation, not prohibition, but regulation of uses by right. We believe that we have a fantastic redevelopment opportunity, approximate $20 million investment in Danvers and in the immediate, in the immediate commercial neighborhood. There's no special permit, there's no variances. Allen &amp; Major's zoning legend shows complete compliance with the density and dimensional requirements of the town in this district. In fact, we lessen the impervious surface, which is currently at 69%, we lessen that by approximately 16% to 53%. And we think that's important and beneficial to the resource area, to the environment, as well as the new stormwater system that's been designed by Allen &amp; Major and complies with best management practices. So all improvements, all tremendous benefits to the town and to the immediate commercial area. Plus, we have a landscape plan that shows hundreds of new plantings and aesthetics and it is really a terrific redevelopment. And for the public, you know, these plans, Allen &amp; Major's plans, 27 pages are comprehensive and they can be viewed publicly on the department's website. It's all improvement, including the construction of Chalet Court. The filed plan shows the MassDOT layout, which was approved and it is, it's a layout that was, was given to the town. And for this property, when they closed the curb cut on Endicott Street, Chalet Court was to be the layout that served this property. We believe that it's sufficient, but we've been working with our neighbor to make some modifications. Just so the board knows, we got a proposed modification plan yesterday afternoon, so we've had no opportunity to digest it and present it to the board this evening. So we know that HSH has performed the peer review on the current layout, the MassDOT layout. We hope that we can reach consensus with the, our neighbor at 180 Endicott. The engineers for each property have met, the engineering teams have met. As I said, we got the proposed modifications yesterday afternoon. I spoke with Attorney McCann today and we're hopeful that the engineering teams for each property can reach a final plan, final modifications this week. And then we can work out the details on any easements and business matters so that we hope to have a, a complete package that's an agreed and consensus reached package for the board prior to the November 14th Planning Board meeting. So with that, I know that Greg Micalitis, our, one of our engineering consultants, has been dealing with Scott Cameron from the neighboring property, and I think Greg can give you a report on that, and then Bob Clark can go through some of the revisions that we've made. And then I think we're going to hear from Jeff Dirk, our traffic engineer, and probably the peer reviewer for the town. Thank you.
Thank you.
Greg Micalitis from August Consulting. Frank did a really good job of summarizing. This board encouraged us to work with the Butters. We've had some really productive conversations and the comments we received yesterday are fairly minor, quite frankly, so we're just going to work through those. I know, you know, Josh was hoping we'd present that plan tonight. We haven't had a chance to basically digest it. We also would like to have a work session with Scott and the peer review consultant. And as Frank said, we're pretty confident we're going to reach agreement on connections for the shopping center to Chalet Court. And hopefully we come back, we see you folks in a couple of weeks, we have an agreement in place.
Okay. Thank you.
For the record, my name's Robert Clark from Allen &amp; Major Associates. So I was requested to run down through the presentation. I will dive a little deeper into the items that have changed from the last time we presented. So this is meant for a little bit of a refresher, but also an update on items that have changed. Josh, would you like to go to the next slide? As, as was previously mentioned, we're at 152 Endicott Street, Zone Commercial, 4.3 acres. We have a one-story Fidelity at 10,900 square feet and a four-story hotel, gross square feet on that is 61,000. Josh, you want to go to the next slide? We do meet with all the zoning. We are compliant with all the current zoning. Next slide, Josh. We have 180 parking spaces on site currently. There's 35 employees for the Fidelity, so that is 101 for the hotel and 79 for the Fidelity. Comes to 180. Next slide, Josh. So here's a picture of the existing site. It's the old Denny's Motorcade Hotel located at 152. There's Frag Mighty's in the back. We've gone through the Conservation Commission. We satisfied all the comments for, from the peer review on that and we hope to be on for Thursday night. Next slide, Josh. Here's a rendering, the top slide here is what you would see from Endicott and the back of the building, which is where the parking is and little patio space for the employees. So here's a revised color rendering. Some of the major things that we removed and changed was we removed 220 feet of wall in this location at the request of the Conservation Commission. That was a five-foot wall, we grading down at a three-to-one slope. We also have been speaking with the gas company and we have access in this location to get down to the Tennessee Gas easement. We also removed the proposed sewer pump station, which is a municipal station up at the north portion of the site. There's already existing curb cut that ties in there, but they would have a 2,700 square foot easement on this property and that would be a municipal pump station. We did remove some of the plant material in this location, but now we have a row of arborvitae's along the gas station here in that location. Next slide, Josh. The grading really hasn't changed. That is an underground system here in the parking lot and has discharges out to, back to the southern portion of the site. All the slopes will be three and a half in the parking area. There is still some wall in this location here and, let me go to the next slide. So that's highlighted there, we do a water quality unit as well as a treatment swale within the underground system for drainage. Everything will be deep sump, wooded catch basins. Next slide, Josh. So with the wetlands, we are filling 2,327 square feet for the access road of Chalet Court. We are replicating 3,513 where we're only provided 3,491. There's existing on-site floodplain. We are filling 9,489 and we're compensating greater than a one-to-one requirement, up to 11,152 cubic feet of flood storage. And the replication area is here in the dark blue. We did change the culvert at the request of DPW and also the Conservation Commission. We had round pipes and those are going to be box culverts running underneath that road. That only takes stormwater from the neighboring parking lot and it's more or less a conveyance back to the existing swale at the southern portion of the site. Next slide, Josh. These are the utilities here, you can see we're tying in water along Chalet Court out to Endicott and then all other utilities will come out to Endicott in this location. Next slide, Josh. So we are, we do have a robust landscape plan. Here is the arborvitae's that I mentioned, we have perennials, these are river birch, crab apple, and so this is the patio area of Fidelity at the rear of their parcel and it's heavily planted. And then, as I mentioned, we did remove some of the plant materials here because of the utilities that are coming up through this location and we replaced those with the arborvitae's so that it was a little bit more of a compact screening for the neighboring parcel. Next slide, Josh. So as Greg mentioned, this is, right now we're, we have the access coming through Chalet Court. The red is the existing property line. And Jeffrey Dirk, the traffic engineer, can discuss in depth a little bit more on the access of the development. Next slide, Josh. And this is just some, some of the paint striping crosswalk. There was a request for a crosswalk in this location on Endicott, so we have shown that. I did see a new request to show a second crosswalk crossing Endicott up at the, up at the old curb cut, so, Josh, you want to go to the next slide? And then with that, that's, that's the revised plan. And again, we did remove an awful lot of pavement in this location and I think we restored about 15,000 square feet of riverfront area. So it's what was previously pavement is now going to be green space. With that, I'll pass it over to Jeffrey Dirk from Viness.
Thanks, that's fine. Can we actually go back, if you have, if you have the chance, can you go back a couple slides to the intersection improvement or I can work with whatever you have? Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, Jeffrey Dirk with Viness and Associates with Transportation Consultants for the project. I think as you heard at the outset of the presentation, we have had the opportunity to actually have two peer review letters, which I think you have in your file, assessing the original traffic, transportation assessment we prepared for the project. We've responded to an initial review that focused on really the, the improvements that are associated with the development proposal. And then we received a second set of review comments relative to those responses, and then today we've received some bullet points by way of email as to the review of our second set of responses. Each of the responses are really focused on this intersection as well as the Chalet Court alignment. And I think as Bob was mentioning, some of the changes that have been made as it relates to the transportation improvement program, as you might remember, the centerpiece of what we're doing is the construction of Chalet Court. Along with that is a reconstruction of the signalized intersection here with Independence Way. That requires a re-timing of all of the traffic signals along the Endicott Street corridor, not only re-timing them, but changing the coordination pattern so that as these signals communicate with each other, they do it in a better way, but also in a way that accommodates the additional traffic that we're adding to this intersection. So with that... So as a result of the peer review, there's a number of betterments or refinements to the improvements we're doing. Those betterments are really focused on what we call mobility, so it's really about non-automobile modes of transportation. We talked about the fact that there is bus service in this area. So what we're doing in terms of the refinements or improvements to mobility at the request of the review consultant dealt with really how pedestrians circulate at this intersection. So you do see, originally, there was, there's no crosswalks across Endicott Street at this intersection. If you want to cross Endicott Street, you have to go down to the 128 Southbound ramps, and that's where the crossings actually take place, because there's not a sidewalk on the south side of Endicott Street. So two of the improvements that we had done initially were constructing a sidewalk along the entirety, basically from the Chalet Court intersection, extending all the way to where there's an existing sidewalk and that crosswalk at the Route 128 Southbound ramps that has signalized crossing there. So that completes a pedestrian connection in this area where the project site is located, where there isn't one today. So it'll be fully walkable along the south side to get you up to the Southbound ramps, then you'd cross over, and then you can continue across 128 and continue to the Market Basket Plaza. So adding a sidewalk along the south side of Endicott Street, accompanying that is a crosswalk across the Chalet Court that we'll be constructing. And then we also added a crosswalk to have a crossing across Endicott Street at this location so that you don't have to walk as far to have that crossing take place. A recent addition that was asked was a crossing in Endicott Street on this side. We typically, in MassDOT, requires that when we look at signalized intersections, they want crossings across all four legs of the intersection. So unless there's some impediment to being able to do that, they want it to be fully walkable. So the recent request was to add a crosswalk in this location here. So in an email that I sent today, we did commit to doing that. There's a couple of things that need to go along with that. One of the other asks today was to look at how the pedestrian signal phasing would happen at this location, because what we'll end up having is when you push the push button, all traffic's going to stop. And so that has some implications in terms of not only delays at the intersection, but I think most importantly is the queuing. So we need to make sure that when you push that push button and we stop all traffic at the intersection to allow for pedestrians to cross, that that queue doesn't get back to the point where it starts to interfere with operations at the Southbound ramps. We have enough queuing capacity heading or to the west of the intersection, but to the east of the intersection, we're basically bound between this intersection and the Southbound ramps. So that's a homework assignment that we're still working on, because it's not very easy to implement that and still maintain coordination of all of the signals. So we're working on that, but we have committed to constructing that crossing. That will require this entire intersection to get rebuilt, just so that we can bring it up to current standards, because the situation like you have here, we're not allowed to have wheelchair ramps that direct people into the middle of the intersection. We have to have separate wheelchair ramps for each of the crossings. So what that requires is we need to separate these two ramps, so this crossing needs to move to the north. And then, as we look at the Chalet Court crossing is okay, but the crossing at this location is going to have to be somewhere in this location here. So you can see, from where my red line is going on the screen here, the existing stop line is here. So that stop line has got to move approximately 50 feet to about this location here. So we are reducing that queue storage capacity, and that's what we're analyzing. We think it works. We just need to make sure that the signal timing and how it affects the other intersections along the corridor will also work. So that's something, again, that we're currently working on. We'll probably have an answer to that this week, but, you know, it's our opinion, we can construct that crossing. We just need to get the signal timing to work, get that to your consultant so that they can look at it. Just, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
While you're out there, instead of making him come back up, just, my question is, is there a certain amount of time that you give the person to cross, which is going to obviously filter and factor into your queuing?
Yeah, so the crossing distances depending upon how long the distance is that you need to, how long it takes you to cross the intersection. And so that fixes the amount of time. So what we look at is, this crossing is about 85 feet. This crossing here is almost about the same, it's about 85 to 90 feet as soon as we move it. So the nice thing in looking at it is your crossing distances are all about the same. So we take that distance and divide it by the pedestrian crossing time, and that gets us to about three and a half feet per second, that's how, or four feet per second. And that tells us, if you have to, if it's 85 feet to cross and it takes you four feet per second to walk, that sets our signal time, and that tells us how long, basically, no vehicle's going to be moving at the intersection. So that's what's entering into our calculations, and then we look at what it does to the queuing on the corridor. So that's the, it's not a simple thing, so we're doing that iterative approach now, and then we'll provide that information to your consultant. But again, it's something where there's often a trade-off, where you have safer pedestrian accommodations and you have vehicles wait a little bit longer. And so the balance is that you're really improving mobility and reducing, making motorists wait a little bit longer, but as long as it doesn't cause backups into adjacent intersections, that may be that's something that's acceptable. So we'll provide that to your consultant just to see, you know, the, basically the trade-offs as a result of adding that crossing. And then, you know, she'll be able to provide some comments to you as to what her thoughts are, as to whether that's a significant benefit and it's something that should be put into the design. We're committed to doing it one way or the other, so we're doing that. The last thing I want to mention is, as you heard about Chalet Court. So we had presented some initial design plans to you, just showing how it could be constructed within a layout. Your consultant looked at that. We provided some design modifications to it. Again, those design modifications were really about mobility. It was making it more comfortable for pedestrians to travel along that road, and then as well as making sure that we maintained access to the Butters' property for fire trucks and importantly, for delivery trucks, to make sure that that could all work as well. So some refinements have happened, as you heard. What I would say is, in terms of those refinements, there are actually improvements as they relate to this pedestrian mobility, is making it more comfortable for drivers, but also making it more comfortable for pedestrians, and then allowing for some connectivity to happen between the existing shopping plaza and the bank on the north side. Again, it really focuses on this comfort and mobility and really trying to get people out of cars and make sure that they have a safe environment to be able to traverse along these roadways. So we think, you know, as we're working on those refinements, the plan that you'll see is actually going to be something that's an enhancement over what we've provided to you, although from a functional perspective, what we provided works, but there's some things that can be done to it to make it better, and those are the conversations with the Butter that have been very productive, and we think, as it's presented to you, will be something that you'll see similar to this intersection. You're going to see better mobility improvements and more comfortable for bicyclists, pedestrians, and then this connectivity to take place as well. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you have now or after you hear from your consultant.
Do you want to have questions for the traffic consultant? Tori?
No questions.
Lou?
At the moment.
Gene? Mike?
I just have a quick question. So is the current, the new plan there, is the, is the traffic lanes at the end in the same spot as the existing, roughly?
Coming from Chalet Court, or?
Correct. So the two arrows there at the end, just north of your cursor?
So this is the existing island that lines up approximately with the island that's here. Today, it's basically, it's wide open, so you don't have definition of the travel lanes. You could probably stripe those. But to stay within the alignment, you know, it bends basically from coming in. Instead of coming straight into the plaza as it does today, a curve gets created as you're coming into the plaza, and so there's a realignment of this island that takes place as well. But essentially, you have a wide entering lane and a wide exiting lane that we've striped as a left-through and a right-turn lane, just to take up the space that's there, rather than having it be really wide.
So when you pull straight across, you'll still pull straight across towards the mall?
There is, yes. One of the refinements we've worked on with the Butter is the alignment of this island to make sure that it provides proper direction going straight across, and then the same thing coming back in this direction. So you can see the nose of the island today is over here. We're shifting it a little bit to the right, but we may be doing some slight refinements to it, but generally, what you'll see is about the same, yes. You can straight-through alignment and then coming in the other direction as well.
And then a follow-up to that, so those two arrows at the end, obviously a right turn and then a straight and a left turn. Is it a single lane leading up to that?
It is, because you can see, because of the corner radius that's here, this right-turn lane, basically, it's about one or two car lengths deep.
So is there any concern about, like, backup at that intersection? Like, if some people are trying to go right and you're trying to go straight, you're going to get backed up if you can't get to that point?
We've analyzed this approach as a single lane, not as two lanes, just because it's so short that we didn't want to, we didn't want to analyze it to the extent of saying you have two lanes of capacity, because you really don't. So we've analyzed it in terms of the signal operations and the queuing as if it's just one lane.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it.
Tim?
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name's Carrie Pike with Howard Stein Hudson. I'm your traffic peer consultant. I think Mr. Durk just described a lot of the back and forth that we've had over the past month and a half or so. We do have a few remaining comments, and as he described, one of them was related to this pedestrian crossing on the east side and just providing that full connectivity around the intersection. There's also still a few questions just about truck access, but I think if we're able to have this meeting of the engineers, we can work those items out. The other items, I mean, everything that they've done and submitted to you has been per standard, as, you know, as is required, following the MassDOT guidelines. In the case of the intersections on either side, there's actually going to be some capacity improvements, as Mr. Durk described, because of making those timing changes and getting better coordination along the corridor. So that's a benefit to the area as a whole, not just for this project. And I think overall, as I said, we're, you know, we're nearly there. We had asked some questions about different things like construction impacts, just making sure that they give you some information about how that's going to happen in terms of the site, and, you know, the site is large enough that they can do staging and things like that on the site. It's not a super tight site where you'd be concerned that they're going to be impacting either Endicott Street or the neighbor. And I think, as I said in general, I think we've gotten, the comments that were made in these two rounds of back and forth have been answered satisfactorily. So if you have specific questions, I'm happy to answer them. And I'm looking forward to seeing this, this new modification plan.
All right. I think we'll hold questions at the end, unless anyone have any questions. Thank you. Anything else, as far as the presentation, or is that, is that it for what's new since we saw you in July?
That pretty much is our presentation at the moment, and we're happy to answer any other questions.
Okay. Any other questions from the board in a general nature on what's been presented this evening? Tori?
No questions.
Lou?
Yeah, just, I guess, in terms of what's currently outstanding, because I guess, I mean, in terms of what we may not have seen yet, because I know that, I guess there were some, there were some emails back and forth, just, I think just today or yesterday.
So we did get some proposed modifications, and that's what we talked about yesterday afternoon. And so the engineers from 180 and our site 152, the engineering team, they're going to meet and hopefully get a final plan that we can present soon. Hopefully, it's finalized this week, and then we can work out any of the legal instruments that have to go along with it between the parties, so that we have a, hopefully, a complete package that is submitted prior to the November 14th meeting. Obviously, Torrington wants to get to work yesterday on redeveloping this site, and we have the commitment with fidelity that we want to preserve and, you know, have that tenant for the 10,900-square-foot, single-story building.
Okay. Further questions? Lou?
Excuse me, I'll just, to further answer your question, there were four bullet points, I think Jeff alluded to this morning. Bob Clark can speak to two of them tonight, and then I probably, I don't know if she got a chance to see it, but Jeff did respond to, you know, he said he's still working on one of them, and we responded to the other one. So I think three out of the four, we can discuss tonight, and as Jeff said, he's working on his homework on the stacking and the corridor. But Bob, you want to just talk about the other two?
Again, Bob Clark from Allen &amp; Major Associates. So Jeff mentioned the, I'm going in reverse, but Jeff mentioned adding the crosswalk here and then the queuing for the light for the pedestrian. So Josh, if you go forward, I think maybe three or four slides, you can talk about.
Maybe backward?
One more. Should have the truck turning? Okay. So one of the questions was that, all right, hold it right there. So this, this turning movement here is a little smoother coming into the site. This one pops out a little bit. Alls that is, is really a product of the software, and actually, the gentleman that's touching the different vertices as he lays this in and runs his model, he has to pick the path. So alls that is, is just, when he, when he created these two images, he ran the truck in to show that it can straighten out, and then there was also a request of showing it coming down to the second access point, which is here. So that's just a product of, that's a WB67 that's showing coming into the Bed Bath &amp; Beyond lot. And then, could you go to the next slide too, Josh? And then there was a comment about the existing, I believe it was down in this slide here, that that truck, as it came into the Bed Bath &amp; Beyond lot, it clips the handicap parking down in this location. So right now, the current design is to come in, and obviously, the dash lines are showing work being performed on the Bed Bath &amp; Beyond lot. One of the requests that have been made without going deep in detail with the changes that the two engineers are talking about here is lining this access road up with the Salem Five access, so the truck would actually come in and then straighten out down through here versus over in this location. So that's, that's one of the, that's one of the items. So it's, it's really some circulation issues there existing on the Bed Bath &amp; Beyond lot that would be modified when, when they agree to the modifications to Chalet Court. So those are the four comments.
Anything else, Lou? Questions, Gene?
Sorry, not to cut you off, Jim. I think our peer review would like just to make a comment, not to cut you off.
Okay, no problem.
Could you just back up one for me? Josh, thanks. So.
Which one are we thinking, Carrie?
The one with the two lefts. One more back, I think. Yes, this one. So I understand what you're saying about auto turn, but what I don't understand is, if this is about the operator manipulating, why are both of them not straight? Because I'm concerned about the image on the left and the fact that the truck is swinging out into the through lanes. And if that has to happen, we have a problem. Okay, so I would just like to see a corrected graphic that indicates that, because, because I guess, like I said, if, if, one of the other comments that I had was to change the phasing because of the tightness in the center of the intersection, that you couldn't have two trucks turning left at the same time, because they would hit in the center. So I asked if they could change the phasing so that the left turns in the east and westbound directions do not go together. And Mr. Durk did that and gave us that analysis, and that seems to work, so that solves that problem. But I was just concerned if, that if indeed a truck needs to make that swing out to the right to turn left, then there's a potential for that truck to hit a car that's going straight through on Endicott Street. So hence the question. I understand how the software works, but that's not what your graphic indicates. So I just want to make sure that there's no issue there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Further questions from the board, Gene?
No, I don't have any questions.
All right. Tim?
Just a quick clarification on this, because this will change again, right? If what we just talked about is that the crosswalk on the east side is now going to push the stop line back on that intersection, and will that have any effect on the turn? I presume not if they have more space.
So the moving of the crosswalk back shouldn't have, it wouldn't have an effect on the turn effect. The truck can start to make its turn sooner, and I think one of the things that your review consultant had mentioned, that kind of the overlapping turns, the truck could probably make the turn tighter and closer to the east side of the intersection rather than overlapping on the west side. But what's really controlling the maneuver of the truck through the intersection is its target point. So it's the receiving lane, and that receiving lane, or where it is on Chalet Court, that's a fixed point. So the truck's got to make its turn to basically enter that receiving lane. So even if we move the stop bar back, the truck's still going to need to go forward and then cut the wheel. So I don't think you're going to see a lot of change in terms of the path that the truck's going to have. It's really, to address what your review consultant was talking about, it's looking at kind of the width of the receiving lane in there to make sure the truck can make the turn, and as she said, you And as she said, really picturing the fact that vehicles, in the case of a signalized intersection, the vehicles are stopped at the stop line on Chalet Court, they can't move because they have a red light. So if the truck is making the turn to go in, as she was describing, you can't cross the path of the stopped vehicle. So if we have to make some adjustments in terms of the design or in terms of providing the turning analysis to prove that out to her, we need to do that, because we can't have a situation where the truck swings over a place where a vehicle stopped at a red light and can't move. So we'll be working on those changes, both the auto turn analysis, as well as if there's tweaks that need to be made to the design of Chalet Court. You know, it's a brand-new road. So similar to what we're dealing with in the conversations with the abutter, do it correctly and make sure we provide that to you. So that's what we're doing.
Okay.
So we've heard a summary now of sort of the several points that have been addressed or outstanding and in the process of being addressed. So with the, do we have a summary yet of the new plan, the midnight plan from yesterday, and what the additional changes are that we can hear?
I think they need until the next meeting to review it. They haven't reviewed it thoroughly, so I think they're tabling that till November 14th, correct? Attorney Marinelli?
Yes.
Yes.
Is there a reason why that plan wasn't made available and time to be responded to?
I think they just got it yesterday.
Yeah, we just got it yesterday.
This was on the schedule for a while.
I think that as Attorney McCann discussed will be today, they received it on October 5th, and they went to work on it right away. But these things take time, and we got the modifications, proposed modifications, yesterday. And I think some of that was shown in the, generically, in the plan that Bob just went over, the Boulevard Inn, and, but all of that's being refined so that we can present a proper set, properly engineered set of plans.
Yeah, so when we're finished with the comment on the board and the public comment, Tim, then I believe the attorney for the applicant will be requesting a continuance. Attorney Marinelli?
Yes, we've...
Yeah, you provide.
We'll address that at the end of this discussion.
We did send a letter today for the extension of decision time to November 20th, so that would encapsulate the November 14th date for the next hearing.
So we'll put that, we'll prove that at the end.
The other thing, to further, for answering your question, we didn't want to give a first presentation tonight without giving the courtesy of the peer review consultant to look at the plan. So that's why we're going to include her with Scott and ourselves in a meeting, a work session, so we're all in agreement. It doesn't do any good tonight to throw up a plan that she hasn't seen before. So we're trying to show some professional courtesy also.
Further questions? Michael?
No questions, thank you.
All right. This is a public hearing. If you would, please, if you have a question, please approach the mic and identify yourself. Attorney McCann?
Josh, do you have the overall site plan?
The, like, the civil, like, 27...
Yeah, just one that shows the entire area. I just want to point out to the board and make sure that we're clear as to who I'm representing. Again, my name is Nancy McCann. I'm here on behalf of Eastern Bank, the trustee of the Animus's Trust. The Animus's Trust is owner of not one abutting property, but actually, three. So I don't know where the pointer went. Oh, here it is.
Attorney McCann, is this suffice?
Yes, that's fine.
Okay.
So the Animus's Trust is the owner of three properties. One is located at 160 Endicott Street, right here. That is the Salem Five Savings Bank. Second is 180, which is the shopping center, Bed Bath &amp; Beyond Shopping Center, as it's known. And then, slightly off, but located right here at 182 Endicott Street, that's McDonald's. All three of those sites have existing longstanding businesses located on their properties, and they utilize that signalized intersection as their access point to get into their businesses. At the meeting, last meeting, which was on July 25th, I submitted a letter on behalf of the Animus's Trust outlining the concerns that we had with the submitted site plan that this board has received. And to date, as we've said, has been said tonight, that is the only plan that you've received. And I outlined the concerns with that plan, and those plans, those concerns still stand. And the peer review consultant that you have had submitted a peer review report that outlined at the end a number of items that dovetail into the concerns that we had, that I outlined on my July 25th letter. She raised concerns with regard to showing how the fire department will access the adjacent properties. Well, I'm representing the adjacent properties, and we're very concerned about that. Comment from your peer review consultant, I was just discussing, the proposed curb cut will not accommodate largest trucks that will access the site, and the applicant should explore options for making turning movements feasible. There's still concerns about site access and safety of the intersection. Applicants should make improvements. That was on comment number 26. There was a concern about the five-car queue being required, but only a one-car queue being provided. And comment number 22, the need to coordinate with abutting property owners. And again, I'm representing those abutting property owners. Those items were the outstanding items from the peer review report that have not been addressed with the plans as they've been submitted to this point. Now, my client is not opposed to this project, and I want to be very clear about that. They are not opposed to this project, and as Attorney Marinelli said, it is a tremendous project, tremendous, terrific improvements, and that may be so. But it's only tremendous and terrific if it's done properly as it relates to existing businesses. Otherwise, it can be a disaster for existing businesses. And what we think is, we've taken steps in the right direction to create a layout for this project that is going to work for the three existing businesses that are on the site. But we're not there yet, and specifically, what you have received, we are still very much opposed to. It does not work, from our standpoint, for purposes of providing access for our customers and our employees and our deliveries. And we need safe access, and we need to maintain that access and make sure that it exists. Therefore, while we're not opposed at all to the project, it has to be done in a way that does not damage the existing businesses. And those existing businesses are Salem Five, McDonald's, and the retail center. So it's important for us to participate in this process, and that's what we have been doing, and we've been making some very good headway. So we have been dealing in good faith with the applicant in developing a revised and acceptable layout plan, and we've made a lot of progress. But I want to be clear, the plan that has been submitted to you thus far is not that plan. And I think folks who have spoken before me tonight have said that, that the plan, you are going to be getting a new plan. And what has been presented and what has been spoken to tonight is not that revised plan. The revised layout is near completion, and we believe that that will be able to address the concerns that the peer review consultant had, as well as the comments in my July 25th letter, and address those outstanding issues. I guess we're not clear as to why you haven't seen some of that going along, but that's fine. I think it also makes sense, as was just said, to provide the final layout that is acceptable to the abutters and have time for your peer review consultant to look at that. So that's kind of where we are, and I just want to make it clear that what's been submitted to you formally is not acceptable and is a real problem. We don't think it's safe, and we don't think it works. And I will go back to my letter of July 25th. However, we've made a great deal of progress, and what I would request and encourage the applicant to do is allow us to proceed forward with the meetings that have been discussed and continue this matter, whether it's to your next meeting or one thereafter, to allow the plan to be revised, presented to your peer review consultant, and to give the peer review consultant the opportunity to review that, and that this matter be continued to allow that to happen. Because we do see benefits to this project, certainly, but we do see potential for significant downsides to existing businesses if it's not done properly. Again, I'm pleased with what I've seen as far as what the engineers have been able to design, and there's a little bit further to go, but it's come a long way. So I'm certainly encouraged by that, as is my client, Scott Cameron. Our engineer is here this evening. If you wanted him to go into depth on our concerns, but I really don't want to dwell on the concerns about the plan that you've received, because that, I am encouraged to say that is not going to be the plan that you will ultimately be voting on. So I thank you for your time and your consideration of the concerns and the needs of the existing businesses that will be very much impacted by this development. Thank you.
Mr. Bradstreet, in the back.
Bill Bradstreet, town meeting member, precinct one. Does the state have a standard for radiuses? The islands and the radiuses that were shown for trucks to make the corner? I don't know about you, but I've seen some very long tractor-trailers, and I expect them to not only try to make the corner, but go over the center to get around. To me, that's a safety issue. I don't know if that's what Ms. McCann was alluding to. I've seen it happen, and I certainly wouldn't want to see it happen on Endicott Street because of the traffic flow that's there. That's just one thing. Thank you.
If I could just say, I think the gentleman from Viness might want to respond to that? Thank you.
So the, there are minimum radius standards. They're really, they're based on ninety, you know, perfectly ninety-degree angled intersections, and we have some skewed angles here. So we're designing it, as your consultant had said, because of the skewed angle that the truck is, you know, not making completely a ninety-degree turn, it's actually greater than ninety degrees, that offswing of the trailer is a little bit different. So that's why this modeling is very important, but also to the abutters' attorneys' concerns as they relate to the trucks. It's the same thing, because it's the truck, if you picture it, making a left and then making a quick right-hand turn, and that's where your consultant was concerned as well, because that series of, the truck has to make the left turn, the trailer needs to straighten out before they can cut the wheel and then enter the parking lot to proceed to the abutters' property there. So what we're working on with both the abutter, as well as your consultant, is to make sure that all of those maneuvers happen, that no one's driving into the opposing travel lane, and that from the abutters' perspective, they're not driving through parking spaces so that it works under all conditions. So the refinements and that we're going to be presenting, we'll address all of those. And as you heard, we've been working to make sure it works for the abutter, and it also works for Endicott Street.
Okay. Thank you. Other questions from the audience? All right. Anything further from the board? Hearing none. There is, Lou does have an announcement as to his availability on the next meeting, which I don't believe he's available for the 14th.
Yeah, and I'm not sure if I'd mention it to staff, but on the 14th, I'm going to be, I'll be returning from overseas, and I'll be landing at Logan at 7:20 PM. So I think I'll, unless it is a miracle, I don't think I'd be able to make the meeting on the 14th, so.
So that would require, you know, if that, if the applicant chooses to, they could, you know, extend further? So we would only have four voting members at that meeting?
Just for informational purposes, it's not a special permit. It is just, it is the roadway improvement plan and site plan review. So just, it doesn't necessarily need, you know, five members to vote on this matter, but just for informational purposes, for everyone involved.
But they would need a majority vote.
They would need a majority of vote of the quorum of members who are here.
Right, and Michael would not be able to vote.
That's right.
Okay. So the next meeting after that is the 28th?
That's right.
Okay. So, okay. So do you want to, at this point, adjust your request for an extension?
Yes.
Thank you.
I can either submit another letter to Josh or just verbally confirm right now that we'll extend beyond the November 28th date of the next meeting.
So November 28th would be the meeting on the Tuesday, so typically, we would extend the action date until that Friday, which would be...
I would maybe even ask that Monday, just...
The Monday?
December 4th.
Yeah. Like, oh, December 4th. Just, I'd have that week to finalize the decision and get it stamped at the clerk's office.
Can you make that a motion, Lou?
Well, a motion to...
To extend the public hearing?
Okay, sure.
The action date on the public hearing that is.
Yes, okay.
Well, I think it's the applicant has to provide that. I don't think it's something that we necessarily vote on.
What's the action date on this now, though?
As we speak right now, it was October 1st, and then it got extended in an email to November 20th, I think, was in the email.
Correct. And I will submit a letter requesting that the hearing be extended to November 28th and the decision date extended to December 4th.
Okay, but for the moment, don't, we need to act on the extension of the present action date, which expires before our next meeting?
Can we grant their motion?
It's the applicant sort of, you know, submitting their, we don't necessarily have to vote on that, but...
On the continuance?
No, on the action deadline item, the applicant is just going to...
No, I know we don't have it in writing. I'm talking about his original one, which is going to push us beyond the 30th.
Oh, yeah.
So we need to, we need to get to that point.
You're making a...
We could extend the next one at the next meeting. I think we need to approve that.
Which item? The roadway improvement plan, like, the applications themselves, or the certificate of action date?
Certificate of action date, the decision date. So we have to act on it by the 30th, is what you're telling me?
Can we grant his written motion as amended? Is that...
I don't have a problem with that. I mean, if you, he can write it up right now by hand.
Sure. I can.
I guess what I'm saying is the planning board doesn't necessarily have to officially vote on their request, their request, their submitting documentation that they're requesting the certificate, the certificate of action date being extended.
Yeah, he's got my letter.
I don't think that we necessarily have to vote on.
Josh, do you have Frank's letter from today?
Yeah, yeah.
Can he just correct the dates and initial it?
We don't have to do that, like, you know, he's verbally said it, if he, tomorrow in writing.
Yeah, just as a matter of record, that we're extending the...
If you want to, if you want to...
The action date until, what, December 4th?
Sure, yes, that's fine.
Thanks, Josh. I mean, Josh. Thanks, Lou.
So do I want to...
Yes.
Okay. All right, so do we want me also to address the date of public hearing?
Sure.
Okay. So, okay, so I move that the, with respect to 152 Endicott Street, that the planning, granting Attorney Marinelli's motion that the planning board continue the public hearing to November 28th.
Oh, I just have a couple, if we're going to, before we continue the two applications, I just have a couple comments. I didn't know that you were going to make that motion.
Okay.
Would it be okay, Jim, if I make just two comments?
Sure.
One, actually, just one. Obviously, from this conversation tonight...
Obviously, from this conversation tonight, that there will be additional analysis and review regarding the traffic and circulation. So, in communication with our consultant, planning staffs recommending that the development team provide additional funding because we're getting now beyond the scope of the original traffic peer review. So, if we could just make a, there's a motion in the folder? Yep. And if we could just do that before we're continuing both applications? That's my only request.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
Thank you. All right, Lou.
All right. So, first then, we will, I have a motion here regarding 152 Endicott Street, peer review of traffic report, additional funds. This is to certify that at a meeting of the planning board, Danvers Planning Board held on October 24th, 2023, by a motion duly made and seconded, it was voted, "We, the Danvers Planning Board, vote to have the applicant provide $2,000 to Howard Stein Hudson, HSH, for additional review and analysis than the original scope dated July 27th, 2023, for the proposed development project at 152 Endicott Street under MGL 53G outside consultants. All unused funds will be returned to the applicant. Signed on October 24th, 2023, James Sears, Chair."
Motion's been made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Tori. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. Next motion?
Next motion, this is again, just for the record, I'll recite, "The 152 Endicott Street requests for a roadway improvement plan and site plan review pursuant to Section 4 of the zoning bylaw, submitted by JBM Danvers LLC for property in the commercial 3 C3 zoning district. The applicant proposes to improve an existing way, Shaw Lake Court, to access a new retail, commercial building and a new hotel, Assessors Map 63, Lot 14. We move that the Danvers Planning Board moves to continue the public hearing to November 28th, 2023, on motion of the applicant's attorney, Frank Marinella. In addition, we move that the action deadline be moved from the current October 30th, 2023, date to December 4th, 2023."
Marinelli, correct?
Yes.
We'll change that.
Thank you.
Motion's been made. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None.
Thank you.
That's fine. Lastly, we have on the agenda, meeting minutes, draft meeting minutes for, planning minutes for the meeting of September 12th, 2023. Did all members have a chance to review if there are any changes or modifications? If you could hear those now, otherwise, I entertain a motion to accept.
I move that we accept the minutes for, which one did you put up first?
September 12th?
September 12th of '23.
Motion's made. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. All right. And then the next meeting minutes would be those of September 26th. Everyone was here except for Tim. So, if I could, any changes or corrections? Hearing none. A motion to, a motion on this, please?
I move that we accept the minutes for September 26th, 2023. Second?
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. So, staff, our meeting of the 14th, do we have other items?
Yeah, we were, we were going to, similar to what we had done at a couple of meetings is kind of have a finalized summary of the MBTA communities item
with an invite, all the town meeting, all town meeting members.
As, that was like a sort of formal conversation, like we had done the past couple. I believe Brian, we were going to kind of give like a finalized where, you know, where we landed from the previous kind of comments from the board and from the public. And I believe that, as we speak right now, that, so that was going to be on November 14th. And then November 28th was going to be where we were going to officially open the public hearings for all of the zoning amendments that, as we sit right now, will be proposed for the February 5th town meeting. So, I hope I'm not speaking out of turn. But as we sit right now, there would essentially be three, internally how we discuss it, is three kind of warrant articles related to zoning amendments. One would be the MBTA communities and the changes that we need to make for Section 18, you know, like the density table and some of the other. You may, making monthly family, three or more instead of four or more. Second would be kind of housekeeping, although housekeeping is becoming larger and larger. And those are some of the, those are the changes throughout the entire zoning bylaw. Obviously, we will send them to folks as soon as they're ready and prior to November 28th. And then the third is, I believe, the, that adaptive reuse that we've, that's been discussed with the Preservation Historic Ad hoc Committee.
Yes.
So, that's how I, in my mind, in carpentalize the three kind of articles. So, it'd be MBTA communities, what we're calling housekeeping, which is, you know, deleting sentences that, you know, just aren't clear or don't make sense anymore, or, you know, just, you know, overall, you know, create, you know, making items clearer, but throughout, on several of the sections throughout the bylaw. And then the adaptive reuse. I think that's where, it's sort of a moving target and changes internally what we want to do. And, you know, we want to do as much as we can February 5th, but don't want to do too much at the same time. So, it's like everything we do, it's sort of a balance. But at the November 28th meeting, I think that's where we're, we would very likely open the official public hearing with the planning board on these three warrant articles.
So, because of that and because of this meeting, this evening being continued to that date, which could be lengthy perhaps, I'm not sure.
Right, right.
But I would assume you'd have the town meeting members meeting first. Do we have enough time to push that meeting into early December?
We will likely, I think how we set it up was, we'd like to, you know, we'd like to have as much, you know, planning board, public hearings as possible, obviously. So, I mean, if, I think even where we sit, even on the 28th, if we open them, right? We don't necessarily dive into, eat, dive into anything, but, you know, kind of give like a macro level summary, at least. And then the board could provide, you know, if there are kind of comments, we would, you know, there's a meeting on December 10th, there's a meeting or two in January. So, we're obviously not trying to rush it, but at the same time, there is time. There is time constraint, you know?
Yeah, I just think that the meeting for November 28th could be potentially a long meeting if we combine.
Right, for sure.
Those three subjects along with this meeting.
I mean, not that, it is sort of a busy time for anyone and for everyone also, you know.
I'm wondering if, if we just say, if, could we, since it sounds like the November 14th meeting now is just going to be dealing with zoning, could we potentially have Brian present the MBTA stuff? And then would we be able to, in a public way, present the other two subjects at that point, at least peripherally, so that we could then kick that next meeting to early December and not run afoul of our notice and deadlines?
Sure.
Because we have to give a recommendation to the Selectman and Finance Committee to push it forward. I'm just thinking that if we try to do it all on the 28th.
Yeah, no, I don't, I don't think that, we certainly, from staff standpoint, we certainly weren't, we're not going to open and/or close, you know, all of that in one night or even probably two nights. Maybe I could discuss with Brian if we feel like it would be appropriate, if we were ready to, sort of like with MBTAs, it would be more like informal, informal, right? It wouldn't be the official public hearing. I could discuss that with him.
Well, we already had a couple of meetings on that.
Right.
On the MBTA stuff.
Right.
And we had the public and town meeting members here last time.
Right.
So, it seemed to me if we could do that on the 14th.
Right.
I think our board that Lou and I are on with the historic, we're almost at a point where we're going to be able to finalize that. I think in our next meeting is when, coming up.
It's, yeah, I think it was coming up at the end of, I think it was coming up on the 16th, but I reached out to the chair along with, because I'm going to be out of town on that day. And I think it may, it may be pushed to, it may see if they could push it to November 30th.
The, I'm sorry.
Do you have a working, working draft of the housekeeping changes? Maybe we could discuss those two topics?
We could, we could potentially, yes. The issue, not an issue, something just to, we are very soon going to have to advertise in the paper twice and to anyone, to the public and everyone when we are officially going to open them. So, that's just something to, like, in our mind when we're trying to figure out dates and stuff. Because.
So, it'd be the Thursday before, if you're doing the?
Well, you have to do it, like, you have to do it seven days and 14 days.
Yeah.
So, basically, by next week, we have to send it, all the legal ads for all the zoning stuff to the newspaper. Maybe it's something, you know, I could talk with Brian tomorrow, we could figure out. But it probably, I mean, maybe we could at that, on that 14th, we informally talk maybe about all of it, right? And then, on the 28th, when this is discussed, we open the official public hearing for the zoning stuff. You know, probably not because of this other item that will probably be on that meeting. We probably won't, you know, dive too deep into it, just in terms of time. But I think that's where I'm at, unless you folks have different comments.
Yeah, I just think if we could get out the, I think if we can at least get out to the town meeting members, invite them to the 14th.
Yeah.
And let them know about the two other subjects that we're going to be talking about.
Especially, if anything, we could do.
Because at least we have a little idea they've been invited to the MBTA meeting already.
Right.
We've discussed that twice. But just if we can get bullet points on the, on the housekeeping stuff. And then I know.
And then even potentially, yeah, and even potentially the adaptive reuse.
We can talk about that, because that's pretty much almost done.
Right. So, that's, and that's sort of where the housekeeping pieces are too, at that sort of level.
Right.
So, maybe that's, that's what we do. Because as we speak, there's no other items on the 14th. We have an informal with as much of the stuff that we feel is ready. And then officially open it on the 28th, knowing that potentially, we're not, you know, we weren't going to like close the public hearing or anything. Just open it, depending on how long, you know, this conversation.
Well, I think we'd have to give preference to the town meeting members and have that item first.
Yeah, for sure. I agree. I agree.
They would come to us and maybe tell these folks to come at 8 o'clock.
Yeah. I don't have, I think, and I agree with you. And I think that because of timing, that's probably what's going to have to happen.
Yeah. I mean, I don't want them sitting there.
I mean.
We could be at a, we could be at 11 o'clock at night.
Yeah.
We've done those meetings.
But I think that's, I think, if we were to do it 7 to 8 or 7, 8:30, like, you know, just focus on the zoning amendments. At least if you were, you know, you let the development team know, I think that that's.
I guess we just need to know how many meetings after the meeting on the 28th you need before it goes to the next level. So, if we meet on the 28th peripherally, talk about it in roundabout ways, and then we say we're going to meet on the 10th.
Yeah.
And then I imagine we won't meet again until January. Does that give us enough time, basically on the 10th, to push it to the next level?
I don't know if it needs to go to that next level prior to that, like, first January meeting, but I could check and let everyone do. I could, we could.
The 10th is a?
The December 10th, you're saying? Right.
Yeah, what's the day of the week?
I think it's the 12th, right?
I don't think it's the 10th.
It's the 12th. December 12th.
Yeah.
Yeah, it'd be the 12th.
Right, that's the Tuesday, yeah.
Right, that's right.
Okay.
So, then, right, our next official meeting would probably be, I have to look, but probably January 9th.
Yeah.
But maybe it would be beneficial to send around our internal kind of timeline and that you folks would understand, like, you know, just the overall timeline. And that might, that might be helpful. But I'm, I think that we will need to officially open it at the 28th. So, that's where we're at. Anyone have any questions or comments?
Questions from the board?
Sorry. Just, just.
I have a question for staff, just a different.
Anything else on this subject? Everyone kind of gets what we're looking for for the next meetings? Everyone going to be around on those dates? For the next, the 14th and the 28th of November, the 12th of December? Okay, January?
14th, I've got tentative travel. It's not planned yet, so not really sure yet. I'll let Josh know as soon as I get that determined.
And the January dates are? 9th, 23rd?
Lou had additional question?